Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry that we're a little late getting started, but we wanted to let our esteemed council lady get here to join us. I'd like to call to order the July 21st Special Planning Commission meeting. And the first item of business for us is an adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So, motion to adopt.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the recognition of the council members. And Council Lady Allen, I don't know when you want to speak. I think you have multiple places where you can speak. You can speak after Carrie speaks. You can speak as a council person now, or you may speak when we start the public hearing.
I'll wait until the public hearing.
Okay. So, I will start with Council Member Mendez. One more item for the fellow commissioners. When you want to speak, I guess you hit the...
Little face with the speaking button.
Button.
That's it. And then, if you will, turn them back off, because only five of them can be owned at a time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having this specially set hearing. I know with so many people, this will make it easier. Appreciate that. I wanted to tell you a little bit about where I'm coming from in supporting 133. First, the bedrock principles, from my perspective, have been to respect property rights. And then, the second bedrock principle has been to develop fairness and equity. Our goal as a city, I know your goal in planning, is to make sure that we've got economically diverse neighborhoods that are healthy, places where people can live, learn, work, and play. And I believe that 133 supports that goal. Last time this was here, I'm sure you'll recall, everybody hated it. Literally, nobody spoke in favor of it. And I would boil the comments down to three things. From the advocate community, there was the argument that 133 didn't go far enough. And there was also a lot of people who spoke with the idea that 133 addressed the wrong problem, and we should be focusing on something else. And of course, from the development community, we heard that 133 would kill development in Nashville, and we'd all have the blood of the economy on our hands. Lots of work has happened since then. I think, as you know, the Planning Department's consultant did extensive work to try to get the numbers dialed in. And there's also been, I believe, more than a dozen public meetings since you all met last on this topic. There have been ad hoc council committee meetings. There have been ad hoc committee work sessions. There's been a meeting led by the Planning Department. And they've covered probably at least 100 people have been heard from. Every constituency has been heard from. And I want to share with you my perspective of what the council's ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee's view right now is. First of all, as to the complaint that we heard from the advocacy community, that this addressed the wrong problem. And I think Commissioner Clifton might have made a comment about that at the last hearing, too. What we've tried to do is to get a focus on, think about affordable housing as a grid. And on one side, we've got people that maybe go from unsheltered to zero 30 percent of area median income to 60 to 80 percent, and then add up to above 100, which would be workforce housing. And on another axis, we've got the Nashville Next objective of funding it, building it, preserving it, retaining it. There's a lot of different tools that cover different parts of all that. 133 was never intended to be something that addressed all parts of the problem. It was intended to be a shot at one part of the problem. And in recognition that we need to do more on other fronts, there's a package of five pieces of legislation that the ad hoc committee of the council has been working on. And I'll just briefly tell you about the other ones, because I know we're here about 133. The other ones include, number one, get a comprehensive plan prepared by the mayor's office, which will lay out specific measurable goals for affordable workforce housing in terms of units, and have it be measurable over time, so we can see our progress and we can set our goals better. There was a resolution that we passed just a couple days ago that asked the mayor's office to do that. The resolution had the support of the mayor's office, and they are committed to coming up with that comprehensive plan. So much work has been done. We've never put it in terms of how many units of what kind of housing. We're going to crack that nut, so we know what we're doing. Secondly, the Barnes Housing Fund, as you know, has gotten a big infusion of money, $10 million this year, expected another $10 million for future years to come. And we need more stability and certainty about what's going on with the Barnes Housing Fund. So, we expect legislation to be introduced sometime in the next month, which would lay out additional ground rules and checks and balances for what happens with the Barnes Housing Fund, and also make it so the council had an opportunity, once a year, to check to see what money was being spent on, to approve the spending, to make sure that the community has a voice in how we spend our affordable housing dollars. Third, I introduced a bill that passed on first reading this week, which would expand the MDHA pilot program, payment of lieu of taxes. And that would do two things. Increase the annual amount that we spend from 2 to 2.5 million, and importantly, make the location of MDHA pilot apartment projects come through the Planning Commission, so we, as a city, would know that not only does the location meet MDHA's comprehensive plan, but that it matches up with Nashville Next and the general plan. And that'll give us all more confidence that we're putting these properties in fair and equitable locations, and that we're checking the box for Nashville Next, as well as MDHA's plan. The last two pieces of legislation are 133, which we're here about today, and there was always going to have to be some money behind 133, some incentives. That didn't exist last time. This was before the commission. Now, the mayor's office has got a draft that they've circulated, where they propose putting $2 million worth of incentives behind affordable housing. And that's, that is all to address the notion that 133 was too narrow a problem, too narrow a solution to too big a problem. The other problems we heard last time, it was before the commission, is this notion of one side saying it doesn't go far enough, and the other side, the development community, saying, "We're going to toast the economy, and this is horrible. We're going to end all development." Frankly, the council, in balancing that and getting the substitute before you today, at every turn, in my opinion, has erred in favor of the development community, erred in favor of narrowing the reach of 133. First of all, 133 doesn't even come to play unless somebody is seeking to expand their entitlements. In that way, it is voluntary. Secondly, because the consultant gave us data that indicated that we couldn't get an adequate incentive that would work for for-sale units, we completely took for-sale out entirely. No developer has to, who's building for-sale units, has to comply with 133 unless it is 100 percent their wish to do so. Completely voluntary. In addition to that, the incentives changed in order to get them right-sized. And the other thing that is very important, that demonstrates that this is a narrow, careful measure, is the mayor's proposal to fund this to the extent of $2 million. Frankly, we can't screw up the economy on a $2 million project. We just can't. This, the limited dollars, if anything, we may hear from the advocacy community, simply that pool of money's not going to go very far. So, I would make the argument that all the changes, since it's been here last, are in the direction of making this a narrow, careful experiment. I think that you'll probably hear from the advocacy community that they might not particularly like the fact that it is as narrow as it is, but it's a good first step. In conclusion, I just want to reiterate, we've taken for-sale out, period. That makes it narrow. The number of dollars from the mayor's office will be narrow, and it only applies if you seek greater entitlements. This is, in my opinion, worth seeing, whether or not we can move toward having more economically diverse neighborhoods for all of us. And the risk to the marketplace is limited due to the amount of dollars involved and the other changes we've made to 133. So, with that, I would ask your approval to pass 133 along.
Next up, Councilman Cooper.
[inaudible]
No, thanks? Okay. Okay. Councilman Withers.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Council Member Mendez so eloquently spoke about. What is really important to me is that 133 comes into effect through someone seeking a zone change. I think for a lot of council members who have worked with communities and developers in the past, we've been trying to find a way to accomplish affordable housing in negotiating specific plans, in some cases. And usually, the way that we worked that out was to ensure that there was a variety of housing unit sizes and types. But that gets us a little bit of the way there, but that doesn't necessarily get us to affordability on a per-square-foot basis. And even projects or developments that include a certain number of perhaps one-bedroom units are not affordable for a family of five that's being displaced from the small apartments that we are rapidly losing in our neighborhoods. So, the tools that we have had so far have gotten us a little bit of the way there in certain circumstances, but we haven't been able to scale that up in a manner that has really made an impact, I would dare to say. And even that is largely the result of having a very proactive council member, a very vocal community, and a very willing partner, and a development partner, to try to find something. We had a great example of that at 12th and Wedgewood, across the street. That was just at the council, this last hearing. I wish we could always do that, but where we are right now, we need some other tools. And I think 133 has gone a really great way towards at least providing that, certainly when someone's seeking a zone change, that they become eligible for a program. I would be remiss if I didn't mention MDHA, which has been a great partner for affordable housing for a long time. Certainly, in District 6, we're working on the Envision KC program to add a large number of workforce housing, to mix that in with affordable housing, to have a good mix of workforce, as well as market rate housing. That's a terrific tool. We, it's been several years in planning for KC. There is recently a planning grant for Sudocom Napier. So, in certain, specific pockets of the city, there are opportunities to introduce more workforce and mixed-income housing. But again, that is limited to certain, specific properties at this point in time. So, I really like the flexibility that 133 offers, where it could potentially happen in a broader spectrum of the county than a couple of pockets today. So, I'm in support of 133, certainly as a concept. I appreciate everyone who's worked on it so much. I really am looking forward to hearing the commentary from the advocacy community, as well as from the developers. But I think this is a really great first step, and one of many. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Council Lady Weener.
[inaudible]
You, okay. No, I said, "you."
[laughing]
But, that's okay.
That would be my hearing loss coming out. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for indulging me with the opportunity to share with you some alternative thoughts to what you've already heard. I wanted to share that last Wednesday, the development community did sit down with the ad hoc committee within the council. And we had over 100 people at the meeting, and it was vibrant. It was an opportunity for everybody to sit down and engage one-on-one. We mixed the tables with people on both sides of the issue, and it was fruitful. I wanted to share with you several issues that were brought up, that are not included and addressed in 133, and just share that. First of all, that this be implemented on a truly voluntary basis. And what we have now in 133, although it's being presented as voluntary, it's really not truly voluntary. That a goal of a specified number of units be, to be reached during a two-year timeframe be implemented, so we have a voluntary two-year program. And during that time, we specify a number of unit goal that we would like to see reached. During that two years, if that goal is reached, then 133 continues, and we continue to re-up that goal, so that we can really see the benefit of getting our workforce in affordable housing, because after all, that is the goal. That's what we're looking for now. And right now, I think the issue is the means to that end. Insofar as other issues that they brought forward, that we establish a mechanism to support immediate inventory of existing vacancies for rent, so that we don't have to wait for new construction to be completed. And we set as a level of criteria, access to transportation and to services. And we do that across the board. That we establish a mechanism to limit a concentration of units, either by council, district, or zip code, again, with a set of criteria that would prioritize access to transportation and to services, so in both counts. And then, thirdly, that we recommend, and I believe this is already included in 133, that we recommend that OEOE and MDHA provide the oversight and the implementation of affordable and workforce housing. At the end of the day, it's as I shared, it's not so much the end, because everybody's end goal is the same. It's the means to that end. And given the things that are not incorporated into 133, and my hope that we were able to do that, I would ask that you disapprove this bill and consider it incomplete, so that we can go back to the drawing board for a little bit longer. There's no rush, and let's get this thing right, so that everybody on all sides of the issue can support it. And I thank you for your time.
Councilman Pridemore? How about Councilman Sledge?
Thank you all for making the time on a special meeting, and for coming into the district I represent, District 17. So, I wanted to give a little bit of a perspective. I know that some other council members have spoken to the process that we've gone through so far, and obviously, you're very familiar with the process you've gone through, given that this bill was before you at one point, in a different fashion, in a different form than what you've got before you. You know, as a district council member, you know, I'm trying to keep track of a lot of different projects that are going on, and a lot of different projects that, quite frankly, would fall under the, what's before you, under the substitute bill of 133. In sitting through and just taking the last few minutes to think through all the projects that I've got going on in the district right now, that are either under construction, or about to come online, or have been zoned and approved by the commission and the council, there is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,500 units that are being added in District 17 right now. That is all private development. That is throughout the district. That is in a district whose poverty rate is north of 50 percent. And it is in a district that has several major corridors, has lots of access to transit, has basic services, like the very room that we're sitting in. This is why 133 is so important. Because in the 1,500 units that I have literally just scratched out on all of the developments that I'm aware of, nobody came to me and said, "We'd love to do affordable units voluntarily." Not one. And that's no, that's not a discredit to the developer. Many of the developers that I've spoken with have been actually extremely willing to work through a range of housing prices, a range of product, a range of affordability. And let me tell you what that's resulted in so far. It's meant that a project before us in the council, that's a for-sale project, is voluntarily complying with the potential 133 that's going to be before you. That's for sale. That's voluntary under this bill. They've said that they can make those numbers work. I have rental projects that are looking at a variety of incomes that say, "Just tell us what the numbers are, and we'll plug it into our pro formas." And they've come back to me and said, "We think we can make this work." That's a variety of areas in District 17. It's a variety of projects. What I've found, though, is I have to instigate the conversation. I'm the one who has to start with, "We need to start looking at affordability." Under the substitute bill, under Bill 133, I don't have to start that conversation. The conversation's already started. It's a level playing field for every district across the county, that when a developer is doing his or her pro formas in a certain type of project, that they know, "Okay, I have a certain percentage of residential floor area that I have to hit. How does that work when I'm requesting an upzoning?" If this bill does not pass, here's what happens. We go back to where we are right now, where each district council member is having to set his or her priorities in his or her district on a per-project, per-zoning basis. So, if I'm a developer, I come to a council member not knowing where that council member may stand on affordability, based on the project, based on the location of the district, based on that council member's perception of the location within the district, and the perception of the project. If we're able to do something that makes sense across the board, and fits in pro formas, and makes a developer whole, it takes out that risk for the developer, and it takes out that confusion that can often happen between a community, a council member, and a developer when a project is being proposed. These are not easy conversations that we, as district council members, have. When we go in and we talk about four or five acres of previously industrial land that's in the middle of a neighborhood, and we talk about putting a number like 300 units on it, your average citizen does not swallow that easily. They, there are lots of questions, and there should be lots of questions. But if we start that conversation with, "We know that there is a percentage of these that will be required to fit an affordability matrix that has been determined by a lengthy and robust conversation in the city, and lots of vetting from your planning commission and from your council members," well, I think that's something worth going for. I think it's something that's worth pursuing. And quite frankly, I will tell you, when there's talk about that there's no rush on this, there is absolutely a rush on this. Absolutely. We are sitting down the street from apartments that Section 8 voucher holders are losing their apartments every day. That's not exaggeration, because I get the calls. We're sitting across the street from 138 units that's about to be built that'll be 100 percent affordable and workforce housing, because we, as a city, and you, as a commission, and we, as a council, took the initiative to do that, and we just had the great benefit of owning the land as a city. We've got a lot more work to do, and we've got to start now. I mean, there's no, there's no time to wait. Because what we're on the, we're on the precipice of is losing affordable housing stock before we can ever replace it. And that's what the Barnes Commission has been working on so diligently in the funding that we have been approved from the mayor and the council. We know that we've got a huge task. I sit on the commission, we've got a huge task ahead of us on that commission. But I would argue that every commission that touches zoning, or housing, or affordability has this task before them today. It is not something we can put off. So, I would greatly, greatly encourage you to consider the merits of the substitute bill in 133. Consider the conversation, the data, what has been put forth, and the iterations, from where it started to where it is now. And I would greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any other council members that we've missed that want to speak? Okay. Okay. So, we have heard from our council members, and now we have one item on the agenda that we're going to be looking at, and I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Carrie Logan. I'll be presenting the first item on your agenda. This is the text amendment that is BL 2016-133 on inclusionary housing. We have recommended that the Planning Commission approve the second substitute. I will point out to the commissioners that there's a new staff report at your desk today. And there are two minor wording changes in that staff report that I'll walk through as I'm going through the slides. I'll back up for a minute and talk about the timeline for this project. We actually, we issued an RFP for a study last May, May of 2015, and we've been working since then on a market feasibility study that talks a lot about what's feasible here in Nashville as far as affordable or workforce housing. We were required by the Metro Council to get a draft ordinance to them by January 20th of 2016, and we did that. It was heard here by the commission on January 14th of 2016. All of that conversation had a robust public input process with a stakeholders group that met several times, public meetings, planning commission work sessions. And we've continued the conversation. After the Planning Commission meeting, the Affordable Housing Committee of the Metro Council has met approximately every two weeks. Why we have a special-called session today is because the council introduced BL 2016-133 on July 5th, and so the commission needs to make a recommendation prior to the public hearing on August 2nd, 2016. There have been several revisions since the last time we looked at the bill, and I'm going to go through all of these. The first is that any recalibration of existing bonuses that we talked about at length at the last meeting has been removed. They're in a separate ordinance, and that ordinance has been deferred indefinitely at Metro Council. So, this bill only focuses on the affordable and workforce housing incentive program. It does replace some pages of the DTC, right, that has a workforce housing bonus, just making the language consistent with the sections of the code that we're adding. The last version of the bill also addressed non-residential uses and increases to entitlements in non-residential uses. That has also been removed from the bill. It's been clarified in this bill that the only way that you can participate in the inclusionary housing program is as an incentive to getting additional development entitlements. There are some ways through the grant program that we'll talk about later that you could opt-in, but this does only apply when a developer is asking to increase residential entitlements. And that for-sale development would then have an opt-in provision as well. We clarified that the affordable and workforce units are not provided, even if there is an additional density granted, if the adequate financial incentives are not available from the metropolitan government. So, we talked about last time, this bill has a counterpart in a bill that's been proposed by the mayor's office, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But with that bill, if there's, if the money, if there are no more funds left for the financial incentives, then the development entitlements are granted, and no affordable or workforce housing is provided. We've changed the income metric from the area median income to the census data, MHI, or median household income, which has had some impact on the numbers, but not much. They're very close. And so, we, but we've reframed the study. The median household income data is only Davidson County versus the area median income. The consultant, after we last spoke, continued to do sensitivity testing, which is a series of tests to change variables in the model, economic model that he built, to make sure that we have the optimum level of affordability that doesn't impact developers. After that sensitivity testing, the percentage, the percentages in the set-aside table were decreased fairly significantly across the board, and that was in the substitute that was introduced at Metro Council. We clarified that the set-asides are based on the net leasable residential floor area, not the total floor area. So, things like stairways, elevators, hallways, lobbies, amenity rooms, none of that's included in the calculation for the provision of affordable or workforce housing. We've changed the in-lu construction section to have two criteria. If you're on a corridor, then you have a mile to find an in-lu site, and if you're off of a corridor, you have a quarter of a mile to find an in-lu site. Previously, it was a half a mile, no matter where you were, where your site was located. We've added a sunset provision at the request of Metro Council, and an effective date of nine months after the passage of the ordinance has also been added at the request of Metro Council. And I'll to that add that rezonings that happen in that time, they just have to apply for the rezoning before the nine months. They don't have to get the whole way through the process. So, the bill itself, we have the same exceptions, the first exception, which is that it applies to development over five units. The second exception has changed a bit. And that's because after we proposed the exception, we haven't been able to find a data source that allows us to compare rental developments with innocent extract. And so, what we've changed this section to say is that where comparable units to a development that's being proposed are already affordable, then no provision, no affordable housing is provided, and no financial incentives are provided to the developer. So, these are the proposed set-asides, and these set-asides are based on a rental grant that is being proposed by the mayor's office. And that grant would cover the difference between the affordable or workforce housing units and the market rate units that are in that same project. There's also the for-sale subsidy of $20,000 in the UZO on our multimodal corridor, and $10,000 outside of the UZO. So, these percentages have all come down since the last time we discussed the ordinance. The rental incentive, as it's drafted now, provides incentive grants within the UZO or on multimodal corridors. So, the map that you see now shows the UZO in pink, and the multimodal corridors in green and red. And so, those are the areas where the financial incentives are available, which means that the way the zoning ordinance is written, those are the areas where the developer would provide affordable or workforce housing when requesting increased entitlements. So, same examples as last time, with the set-asides change. If a project currently could build 100,000 square feet of residential floor area... If a project currently could build 100,000 square feet of residential floor area and they would like an additional 50,000 square feet and they chose to provide housing at 80% AMI, then 10% of the 150,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet must be provided. And the calculation is based on square feet instead of number of units so that we can encourage some flexibility in unit sizes. These are the two revisions that I mentioned earlier that's in the revised report. One is a clarification on the in-lu construction section to make sure that the one-mile provision is only used on that same corridor so that if you're on the corridor, it's not a mile around your project, it's just a mile on the corridor so that that can facilitate transit. Additional clarification is that in the set-asides came down in the set-aside table, but we did not decrease the set-asides of the in-lu fee. So that's the other clarification that you see here is that with the set-asides reducing the number of square feet that they have to provide, the in-lu fee has to be reduced accordingly. So the in-lu contribution right now would be approximately $139 a square foot within the UZO and $107 a square foot outside of the UZO. And that's designed to be approximately equal to the cost of construction and that we've gone back and looked at that and this would be our recommendation for today's recommendation to the council. So in the same example above, if the project was in the UZO and they opted not to provide the affordable or workforce housing after requesting additional entitlements, their in-lu contribution would be roughly 2.09 million inside the UZO and 1.6 million outside of the UZO. Now, it's important to note, unlike last time, with the rental grant, the developer is being compensated for the difference between the affordable or workforce units and the market rate units so that the in-lu fee or in-lu contribution would be used much less frequently than it was in the last proposal. There are the same standards for construction, occupancy, and enforcement. The timeline is the same. It has to be occupied by eligible households for 15 years for a rental project and 30 years if someone opts to participate for a for-sale project. And as we've heard today already, there have been other conversations about other tools necessary to facilitate inclusionary housing. The first is, of course, the incentives bill that goes along with this zoning bill that has been drafted by the mayor's office and will be filed shortly. They've also proposed $16 million in the Barnes Fund for next year as well as the private-public partnership for the development across the corner at 12th Avenue South and Wedgewood Avenue. The ad hoc affordable housing committee has also been working on the resolutions and ordinances that were mentioned earlier. And staff's recommendation is to approve the second substitute, including the proposed revisions to the in-lu contribution and the in-lu construction sections.
I apologize just for a moment. We're going to move those tables out from behind the last row so that as individuals that want to speak on the matter before the commission, what we'll have them do is we'll have everybody line up behind the last row so that we can get everyone queued up to be able to come up and speak at the lectern. We initially set it up on the far side of the room, which was going to have people going back and forth while we were doing it. So if we open it up to people speaking for and against, I would ask that when we call on those groups to come speak, that they line up behind the last row there along the window, but not at this moment though.
Yeah. Well, so Council Lady Allen, since you are the official sponsor of this bill, it makes you officially the applicant. So you at this moment have the chance to speak or you may wait until a later moment. But you would have the chance to speak and also offer a rebuttal at the end.
Okay. Oh, and should I do it? They are here at this point.
I think maybe it's...
I don't think it actually matters, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm going to simply reiterate some of the points that have already been made. I appreciate everyone coming out. This is clearly something that everyone cares deeply about. We've all agreed that there is a need to increase affordability in Nashville any way we can and also to continue to enable our thriving economy to keep moving forward. We believe that this can do this. I want to again reiterate the changes that have happened from the original bill to this bill to emphasize again that we have tried very hard to listen to the development community and just to recap things that have come out both from Councilmember Mendez as well as others. We began by dropping the companion bill 134, which had other density bonuses that were going to be dropped so that this would be the one and only density bonus and that was identified as a major stumbling block. So we listened to that and said, "Fine, we will continue to enable other bonuses like parking and green construction to be used for density bonuses." So that is something that we took out early on. We have reduced the percent set-asides from the original numbers that were proposed in January. This does only apply when you require, apply for zoning density. It is totally voluntary for sale products now. We removed all non-commercial, rather, all non-residential. So originally, when introduced, this would have applied to all commercial construction as well. That was dropped. We have added the waiting period for the start. We have added the two-year review, the three-year sunset, the $2 million cap. We have the flexibility of going by percent square footage as opposed to a set number of units. And also that the set-asides would not be required for a specific number if there is no incentive available. We have tried to make this a very inclusive process. We are not totally through with this process. There is still time to continue the conversation. The ad hoc affordable committee is looking at a meeting again next week where we will continue to talk about ways to make this work for everyone. I would say that you've heard from one council member speak about how construction has gone in his district. In my district, I've had similar conversations where I have allowed the density to be triple of what is there by right and the projects still simply could not, quote, "Come up with a way to do affordable housing." We are hoping that we can provide a way with the incentives to make that happen in a way that there's a benefit for this from everyone. There is data that shows that there is tremendous benefit from having people of mixed incomes living throughout the city. It gives access to work, it gives access to transportation, it gives access to excellent education. It will have repercussions that go on for generations. That being said, I would again ask for a good conversation today and for folks to listen to how this can be a piece of the solution, not the entire one, but we believe that we've built in enough flexibility. And again, if we discover items that come up today that are worthy of continuing the discussion, that is a possibility. But I would love to keep this conversation moving forward and with that, would ask for the support of this committee to keep that happening. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll start with those that are here to speak in favor of this legislation. As Doug mentioned, if you can line up behind the sign up there.
Does the first speaker come on up?
And the first speaker is welcome to come on up.
Where is the microphone? Right here. Okay, thank you.
And I just need you to state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. My name is David Metter. I'm at 1804 Cedar Lane, which is very near Christ the King Church. I say that because Christ the King is taking steps to become a member of NOAA that I am helping to represent here. And I would just like to say that there's some great work being done by the council and I'm very appreciative as I think all of us recognize their efforts. And yet there are people in the room that have real concerns and so I want to recognize that we have a responsibility. Our group as a coalition of some 49 churches and six labor unions. The labor unions are helping us provide apprenticeships that create great avenues to lifelong, great-paying jobs. The big difference between what's being done right now, in my opinion, versus what's done in the past is that in the past, people would accuse this program, Bill Number 133, as throwing money at the problem. I think what you're going to find, it's represented in this room. 20 years ago, you wouldn't have had nearly as many community activists like myself and others involved. Instead of throwing money at the problem, what we're going to find here is we're going to throw people at the problem. And to whom much is given, much is expected. We hope you will vote yes and hold us to account. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Avi Poster. I reside at 5300 Crest Hollow Court, Council District Four. I stand before you as the co-facilitator of A Voice for the Reduction of Poverty to strongly encourage you to endorse affirmatively BL 133. This legislation was developed by your own staff and deserves your affirmation as well as subsequent adoption at City Council. As a point of information, A Voice is a broad coalition of Nashvillians interested in all areas of poverty reduction, housing being just one of our concerns, but the one that we've been focusing on for the last two years. Before continuing, I want to first applaud the work of Doug Sloan and Carrie Logan. The recommendations they are making or have made are the result of a significant amount of difficult work and hours of listening to all corners of our community. In the end, BL 133 is a reasoned compromise in which we all had ample opportunity to weigh in on. Doug and Carrie have painstakingly worked to create a compromise proposal that best reflects what they have heard, both in large stakeholder meetings and in small focus group meetings, from affordable housing advocates such as us, certainly from the development community, from City Council members, and from members of our general public. While it may not be, you wouldn't be surprised that I would say this, while it may not be as bold as we as advocates would have hoped, without question, for the sake of moving the needle forward and addressing a critical need in our community, we completely endorse it and urge you to do the same. I know that other organized advocate voices, the nonprofit developers, and a substantive part of our public join me in urging you to do the same, many of whom have joined us today to stand in support as I represent them. In truth, it is time to step off the curb. You have heard that before me. For too long, we have known of the growing need to address our housing shortage and simply, simply do not have the luxury to wait any longer. This is not just about what we need today, even tomorrow. It is about what we need for many years ahead for our children and our grandchildren. You well know that population growth, higher land costs, and the gentrification of too many neighborhoods have combined to raise the cost of housing in Nashville to a price point unaffordable for the average family. It is tragic, deeply concerning, that more than half of all homeowners and renters in Davidson County pay more than 30% of their household income for housing and related costs. Nashville needs to act now with intentional land use planning that will bring affordable and workforce housing to socio-economically diverse neighborhoods. At this point in time, your endorsement of the substitute bill 133 just makes great sense. It is the most pragmatic, economic, social, and moral thing for us to do at this time. I urge you to lend your support for its adoption in its current form and enthusiastically pass it along to City Council for them to do the same thing. BL 133 is fair and reasoned. It's a compromise that deserves your affirmation on behalf of A Voice for the Reduction of Poverty and the citizens in Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam McCullough and I live at 1112 North Sixth Street in District Five in Cleveland Park. Some of you may know that we are one of those neighborhoods that have been highly affected by unaffordability. District Five has always been a neighborhood where people could afford to rent or to buy. Currently, we have one of the lowest-income areas in the city and one of the highest price points for housing. And I can give you that information from a recent study that was put out by one of the nonprofit organizations that's represented here today. But we're building ourselves into a situation with unaffordability that even some of the CEOs, Tractor Sales Company that was recently here, said that the price of renting and buying for the employees has gotten to the point that it's a concern as the other corporations want to move to Nashville. So we're building a Nashville that's not affordable for everyone. This isn't something that the nonprofit world and the for-profit building world can do, either one by themselves. I think there's a coalition that might be built to sit down, look at the situation, look at maybe two years of the for-profit builders building, two years of nonprofit switching it back and forth, and then on that fifth year, evaluating the project and go from there. But there has to be somewhere that we start because in my neighborhood, if you're not already there and stable, you probably won't be able to get there. I just thank my parents for leaving us what they did and having a place to stay within the area. I work at Mahari Medical College, which a lot of the people that we serve, the underserved, are being forced out, which that actually affects everything. We have the Ketchman Hospital right there, but a lot of the people are leaving. I hope you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Paulette Coleman. I live in Bellevue at 6205 Willow Oak Drive and I chair the Affordable Housing and Gentrification Task Force for NOAA, Nashville Organized for Action and Hope. For at least a year, we have held conversations and interviewed hundreds of Nashville residents from the north, south, east, and west quadrants and most zip codes. As a result, we have developed an affordable housing platform, which requires preserving, maintaining, and improving the existing affordable housing stock. And to give you an example, if you don't believe it's being decreased, in 2012, there were 616 residential demolition permits issued and that number increased to 980 in 2014. By contrast, there were 3,000-plus apartments built in 2013, only 470 of which were affordable. In 2014, there were more than 10,000 units completed and only 56 were affordable. And this is according to data from Metro Government. Identifying increased and recurring funding for the Barnes Housing Trust Fund is another element of our platform. Also, repurposing tax increment and other public funding for affordable housing development. We also advocate preventing displacement through home repair assistance, property tax relief for long-term residents, homeowner education, et cetera. And the final component is a comprehensive affordable housing strategic plan that includes goals and timelines to meet this critical need. Is BL 2016-133 a panacea? No, but it represents the results of an open and inclusive community engagement process in which diverse constituents across all sectors have had an opportunity to participate. This is a good first compromise and a step which puts us on a good track to a multifaceted, multi-tiered, comprehensive approach to address Nashville's critical shortage of affordable and workforce housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jason Freeman. I'm here speaking for the Central Labor Council of Middle Tennessee in Nashville. We represent over 16,000 working families in Middle Tennessee and Nashville. This issue affects all of our members, but it also affects all working families in Nashville. Police officers, firefighters, teachers, Metro employees, construction workers, the AT&amp;T employees who work in the Batman Building, people who work at Fisk and Vanderbilt, TSU and Lipscomb, the hard-working people that made Nashville Music City, musicians, screen actors, stagehands. They should all be able to live in the city that they helped make famous. Nashville's burgeoning hospitality industry requires thousands of employees who currently cannot live in the city in which they work. This problem is getting more acute by the day. We cannot afford to wait and see. It's time we have to act now, so we urge you to support BL 133. It's a vital step forward in the overall solution to the housing crisis. and Lipscomb, the hard-working people that made Nashville Music City, musicians, screen actors, stagehands. They should all be able to live in the city that they helped make famous. Nashville's burgeoning hospitality industry requires thousands of employees who currently cannot live in the city in which they work. This problem is getting more acute by the day. We cannot afford to wait and see. It's time we have to act now, so we urge you to support BL 133. It's a vital step forward in the overall solution to the housing crisis, so we urge you to support it. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Wright, and I represent the elephant in the room. This is a vision that's dreamed, that's working into reality. By supporting this bill, I stand here and I represent low-income going into affordable income housing. I've sent out emails and got responses from a woman who makes between 40,000 and 60,000 as a single parent, and I've also got a response from a resource that I use for myself. And my emails say that some families, some of the families that I work with have become homeless and had to move out with relatives. This really burdens families and kids I work with, almost always emotionally and behavioral difficulties because of this, naturally which makes things harder at school and in the community, not to mention, lack of housing can affect individuals' mental health and physical health. The young lady who works and makes almost 60,000 a year, she writes, "As a single mother, it is important that my kids attend schools close enough to my job that I can get to them if needed and also be able to participate at school events. Pushing us outside the city limits means accessibility becomes more difficult for me, it means that I can't be there for the award ceremonies, or teacher conferences, or PTOs." So being able to live affordably and have affordable housing, it represents more than just a contractor's building, it gives us an opportunity to actually be closer to our kids, have more convenience, and be able to, like the bill says, have affordable housing. My name is Kimberly Wright, and thank you.
Ma'am, can you give us your address?
Oh, I apologize. I live in North Nashville. It's 1819 Cephas Street, 37208.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Samuel Lester. I work with Open Table Nashville, also am on the Steering Committee of A Voice and work with NOAA's Affordable Housing Task Force. I live at Tuton Morton Avenue, 37211. I urge you to support Bill 133 in its current form. I think Councilperson Sledge spoke very eloquently about the problems that are involved in terms of getting developer support. The argument that developers will build more voluntarily is largely defeated by the fact that there have been years of opportunity for them to build voluntarily. It's clear that the market is not working in this case. We work daily with people at Open Table Nashville who are experiencing homelessness, many of whom are in the process of falling out of their housing, for whom we can't help at all, really in large part, because they have to have been on the street for a year or more for us to be able to help them. But these are families that often have a number of children and who just cannot keep up with the affordable housing. We all know that the James Robertson, last year, was sold off to a developer who's now sold it for double as money this year, and is now going to be luxury hotel. This is happening all across the city. We know of four apartment complexes where this has happened to. We're losing more affordable and workforce housing than we are gaining in the city despite the building that's going on. Bill 133 won't address the affordable housing crisis, it will help significantly with the workforce housing crisis, we hope. Unfortunately, for those people 60% and below, and that includes half of Nashville's workers, we need more affordable housing, and that means that there's a lot of work yet to be done. But this will significantly help teachers, police officers, people that are in mid-level incomes that can no longer afford housing and are in danger of falling out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I think all of you know Father Jopat Brine, and he wanted to be here today, but about two weeks ago, he had the equivalent of a broken back, and he was operated on Monday, so he asked me to come and speak in his name. I'm Father Joseph Brine, native of Nashville, and retired pastor of St. Edward Catholic Church. Since I was operated on for a broken back Monday, I cannot appear before you to support Bill 133. There is such a need for affordable housing in this city that I plead with you to endorse this first step. People of modest means will be able to rent an apartment or purchase a home. When a city makes housing available to those of less means, it has shown that it strengthens the city and reduces the chance for violence in these troubled times. As you represent all the people of this city, approval is only the right thing to do. Each of you is in my prayers at this time. Thank you. Reverend Bill Barnes, incidentally, completely supports this bill also.
Thank you. Can you give us your name and address?
Yes, Jim Zerolak, 1705 Bonner Avenue, Nashville 37215.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Latimer. I'm from 3110 West End Circle, 37203. I am here to ask you to vote yes on Bill 133. I've also been asked by others to read a letter, a letter that you've received, I think many of you received. This letter is worth pondering because it brings across points that are really critical to the bigger picture of affordable housing. We're sitting here arguing about 100 to 200 units a year, and this is a tool, and it's a good and needed tool. What we need is a community to work together to create 1,000 to 2,000 units a year. We do not have a platform to create such a committee at this time, but I would hope that through this and from what is said here, that we would start to figure out how can we all work together as a community to that end. I know you all feel that way, I've heard it expressed in different times. This is from Amy Steele, who is the Assistant Dean of Student Life at Vanderbilt Divinity School. Their commission, "You will likely hear from developers this afternoon who will try to convince you that poverty and fair housing practices are not the problems of government, especially not you city planners. These well-meaning businesspeople are likely convinced that the best way to contribute to a city's growth is by making housing, schools, businesses attractive selling points to people who have the capital to move, to plant, to invest, and to reap the returns of these things. However, I ask you to please remember that you have the capacity as a planning commission to leave a legacy that will long outlast your lives. Upholding the dignity of personhood understands that pulling yourself up by your bootstraps is a myth founded upon the myth of merit, that everyone has the same starting point, the same access to opportunities. Look around our city now, it's homogeneous neighborhoods, it's food deserts, it's schools. You might see this myth is not at play in our time." So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily Theda, and I live at 923 McClarkin Avenue. I work for an organization called Grounded Solutions Network, and we are a national nonprofit membership organization of community land trust, shared equity homeownership programs, and inclusionary housing programs. And so we provide technical assistance and consulting to cities across the country who are doing inclusionary housing. And I wanted to share that we are in support of you voting yes on 133 today. It is very clear to us that the city and consultants have done a tremendous amount of research in order to develop their recommendations, and we applaud their efforts and fully believe that they have followed best practices in terms of assessing the economic feasibility for an inclusionary housing policy that would work for cities and for developers here. That being said, I also want to share that there are some aspects of the policy that are a little hard to grasp without seeing the final report, and I think that there may be some places for improvement that would be abiding by some of the best practices in inclusionary housing. A good example of that is, you know, Councilmember Allen, you mentioned that we want repercussions for generations, and when we only have 15-year affordability terms, where these units will then revert back to market rate, we are chasing after just maintaining our stock of affordable housing rather than keeping it permanently and building inclusive communities. That being said, cities absolutely have to start somewhere, and we inevitably have to refine these policies over time as we gain experience and see market changes occur and learn from best practices. So consequently, I want to say that we fully support the commission voting yes, and we also hope that there's opportunities for policy refinement prior to the third-year evaluation, and that we make inclusionary housing a permanent part of our local community development strategy. Thanks.
Is there anybody else here who wants to speak in favor of the agenda item? Okay, then I would ask that those who are here in opposition, to please come and line up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Director. My name, good evening, my name is James Weaver, 511 Union Street, Nashville, Tennessee. I am here today on behalf of my client, NAOP. I've requested five minutes, given that I represent an organization. With me, I have members of many of the development entities in the region who will be most impacted by the passage of this bill. We've assembled a coalition of sorts to work with the ad hoc committee on this bill that consists of the following organizations: AGC, ABC, NAOP, the state and local apartment associations, the Realtors, and the National Nashville Business Coalition to represent a few. Those organizations oppose 133 as written and support a deferral tonight to allow time for this body to consider Councilmember Weiner's alternative approach to this problem and the mayor's approach, both of which are voluntary incentive-based programs. This is an important issue to the development community. Why? First, because 133 is mandatory, as written, not voluntary, as required by state law. Throwing Director Sloan in the trunk of my car, driving with him to Memphis, is no less a mandatory trip for him merely because I stop in Jackson and give him a bottle of water. He has no choice about to participate, and neither do will the owners and the developers who trigger 133. 133 requires mandatory participation in the inclusionary zoning program it creates, and no amount of fancy legal gymnastics or pretending that shall means anything other than shall can change that. What the owner and the developer community have been pleading with the sponsors of 133 is for a market-driven program that is voluntary and incentive-based, rather than turning immediately to the mandatory approach as required by 133. Several people tonight have spoken about how the development community has not yet addressed this problem, and I would point out to them that what's missing from the current equation is an incentive program. Years ago and during the Purcell administration, we had an incentive program associated with the development of affordable units, and guess what happened? We developed affordable units, and we'll do so again if we're given the opportunity. If an incentive-based program is put on the table, and we're given a reasonable amount of time to produce units, then we will produce units. All we ask for is time, time to work on our affordable and workforce housing needs in a voluntary fashion, as a true partner with the city, with the council, with MDHA, with the nonprofit community who's here tonight, and of course, with the mayor, who has no less than eight different affordable and workforce housing initiatives underway in the city as I speak to you tonight. Last Tuesday evening, the council approved on third reading a project just 500 feet from where we set, a project that will deliver 138 workforce housing units. Thirty-eight more than our consultant believes that 133 will produce in an entire year. No mandates, no requirements, just the private sector responding to the market, the city's desire for housing being known, and the city willing to incentivize the units, and the neighborhood being willing to accept the same. This is what we need to be doing more of, public-private cooperation towards addressing common goals. 133 as written is exactly the opposite of that. We ask for a voluntary program, knowing all the while that if all of us working together can't move the needle on this problem in a reasonable amount of time, we may very well have to look at other approaches. Three days ago, I believe the sponsors and our clients were going to be presenting such a revised voluntary proposal to you today. Sadly, that's not the case. Thus, our request today is simple: defer any recommendations on 133 until you have all of the various proposals before you. Members of the commission, voting to send 133 to the council with your approval creates the path of least resistance for those who want to do something, anything, about our affordable housing stock problem. The problem is that the entire development community sets before you and is screaming that the path of least resistance is simply the wrong path. Voting to send 133 to council with your approval will send exactly the wrong message at exactly the wrong time to the debt and equity markets, who are ever more wary every single day of this market. 133, just like it was the last time I stood up here, is a growth killer. Voting to send 133 to council, Madam Chairman, can I have 10 more seconds? Sending 133 to council with your approval likely forecloses, with all due respect, additional discussion and negotiations. What it will result in is that we're going to end up in a process at council that you're either for this group or you're for that group, and that's what's going to start instantly upon your recommendation. Please consider deferral, allow additional time for the regulated community and the sponsors to continue work on a compromise proposal. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Verlin D. Arden, 211 Commerce Street, Suite 100. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce to speak in opposition to substitute ordinance BL 2016-133. As mentioned in our letter, the chamber is committed to creating affordable housing through public and private partnerships that increase housing supply through voluntary and incentive programs with a clear and reasonable process. We appreciate the ongoing discussions and changes made to the ordinance and are pleased that the mayor's office has released the proposed grants bill, providing a clearer picture on how this ordinance could be implemented. Housing affordability is a key issue for the chamber, and we understand the importance of providing affordable and workforce housing to attract and retain the area's talent. However, we found that in its current form, we cannot support this ordinance. We have sent a list of concerns to the bill sponsor in hopes of finding agreement on an affordable housing solution. Our three primary concerns are the administrative burden that is placed on developers and property owners to monitor and enforce affordability standards, the lag the property owners will experience in being repaid via the grants for the affordable or workforce housing units created, and finally, the cap on grant payments of up to 50% of the property tax increment generated by the development. In conclusion, we respectfully ask that you defer your decision on substitute ordinance BL 2016-133 until our concerns and the concerns of others can be addressed. Thank you.
My name is Wood Caldwell, 4416 Granny White Pike, Nashville, 37204. Born and raised here, worked with the company Southeast Venture, we're celebrating our 35th year. We have made a major commitment to Nashville and have been very involved through this process, was on the stakeholders committee, sat through every one of those meetings, listened to everyone. And I think what I'm taking away from this, I hear a lot of good points from the group that's for 133, but what I really have taken from this, more than anything, is it's brought us together. But something that is mandatory, which it is, I just don't think works. It doesn't even, immediately, as James said, immediately makes us, you know, go separate ways and run from these different kinds of opportunities, instead of really kind of coming with the community, which is what's just occurred here across the street. And I think if you look at Southeast Venture and most of the local developers here, they usually try to engage the community in every kind of way. And I would say to the councilman who said, you know, I've got so much going on, but every time they come to you for rezoning, they start with you. So that's your opportunity to give your input. And then when I talked about Councilman Mendez, he calls this an experiment. We don't need an experiment. We need something that's really going to work for everybody, and I feel like for the next two years, what I would suggest is that you defer on 133, your recommendation for 133, until we have time to talk more about it and we can both get on the same page. Because we don't need an experiment, we need something that will actually Because we don't need an experiment, we need something that'll actually work and that everybody will be happy with going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Bailey. I represent the Greater Nashville Apartment Association, 401 Commerce Street. The Greater Nashville Apartment Association represents over 100,000 apartment homes. It has over 900 members and almost 48 years of experience. They are a wonderful resource that, in our opinion, was underutilized during this process from the beginning. They have firsthand knowledge and experience of how this mandate will directly impact the industry and the developers, from everything from land acquisition to development to the daily management and daily operations of the units once they're finished. Today, the Urban Land Institute published a study on inclusionary zoning. It very specifically stated that in order for inclusionary zoning policies to be sustainable, communities must provide true tangible incentives. We do not believe 133 does that. We have stated from the beginning that we agree with the affordable housing issue in our community. However, we've also stated that we are committed to helping find a solution. We have stated that we support a truly incentivized, incentive-based, flexible, purely voluntary proposal. We believe Councilman Weiner's bill does just that. We also support the mayor's proposal and believe that the two bills would coexist very well. We ask that you all defer 133 until we can consider Councilman Weiner's alternative proposal simultaneously. In the meantime, any information that we can provide for you, and you'll hear from two individuals who have much more experience, longer than I've been on this earth, of development experience, who have a wealth of knowledge, who can tell you how this will directly impact their day-to-day business and how this has failed in other communities. Thank you.
My name is Woody McLaughlin, 3402 Bowling. I have been an apartment owner in Nashville for over 30 years, providing affordable and workplace housing, at times for over 5,000 residents. I've been involved in numerous volunteer programs to assist providing housing through non-conventional rent to people in this market as well as others. I have some concerns about the feasibility of 133. The Denver consultants estimated that the proposal, as it stood at that point, would produce less than 100 new units a year. Right now, we've got 86 people a day moving into Nashville. 100 new units is a drop in the bucket. Right now, in the development pipeline for apartments in Nashville, there are 26,000 new units in the Nashville area coming on stream. We have a much bigger problem than addressing 100 units a year. The program, as it's written now, in my opinion, would raise market rents for the new units because they would have to increase the rents to cover the subsidized. It would reduce the apartment development within the shaded area and would move out. In moving out, you're reducing the tax base for Metro. You're creating greenhouse gas problems by making much longer commutes. You are creating jobs outside of Nashville rather than in Nashville. And all of these, in a voluntary program, could be alleviated in the plan outlined by the mayor. You'd increase the taxes, you'd get more building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Marty Heflin, 4628 Terra Drive, 37215. I am a multifamily housing developer, have been in the business for over 22 years. And in addition, I'm the Professor of Real Estate Finance at the Owen School of Business at Vanderbilt. The bill, as currently stated, really starts with two flawed economic assumptions. First is that apartments and developers raise rents. And second, can't read my handwriting, is that Nashville is the only alternative that exists for developers and investors to deploy their capital. Rents rise and fall based on supply and demand in the marketplace. And rents have soared here because Nashville is a very popular place, number one, and because we had a lack of supply coming out of the Great Recession. In addition, they have soared because of the demographic and financial shift that has occurred in our population, as millennials and others have wanted to move to infill locations, and the propensity to purchase has weighed down, large part due to student debt. I am in the capital markets in my developer hat on every day, and there are two things that are very worrisome to the capital markets right now, as it relates to Nashville. And I cover the whole southeast. Number one is the pipeline of units that's coming online and what the impact of that will be in driving rents down, which we anticipate will be between 5 and 10% over the next 18 months, market at work. And number two, they are concerned about this bill and mandates and what that means for them. The Urban Land Institute, as Katie mentioned earlier, just came out today with a study. And one of the things they said in there is that the single most important factor for an IZ policy to achieve its goals is a significant and sustained level of market rate development in the local market. You kill off that incentive, you kill off that pipeline, you will cause rents to increase. In New York City, where IZ policy has been in place since 2005, recognizing a need for 300,000 units by 2030, it has only produced 2,800 units. Montgomery County, Maryland, the grandfather of them all, did very little other than to spur development in Northern Virginia. And lastly, if I may quickly conclude, Portland, Oregon, which does not have any kind of an IZ policy, produced from between 2010 and 2013, 2,817 units. In comparison, cities that have IZ policies: Boston, 1,836; Denver, 1,603; and DC, 1,328.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Cresswell. My address is 4540 Trousdale Drive, Nashville, 37204. I'm the president of the Greater Nashville Association of Realtors. I am here representing almost 4,000 Realtor members and respectfully communicate opposition to the planning commission's approval of 133 as currently written. First, we recognize the need for affordable and workforce housing discussion, and we are diligently supporting and participating in that discussion. Great strides have been made to work towards a bill that satisfies all sides of the discussion, and 133 in its current form does not do that, nor does it provide for the increase in affordable and workforce housing that Nashville needs. The bill, as proposed, has been substantially revised, and we thank the council in planning for that, but there's still work to be done. We are on record and at the table as supporters of increasing affordable housing, but we do not and cannot support 133 as currently written because it's not a voluntary incentive-based program. For inclusionary zoning to work, in our opinion, the program should begin as a voluntary program for a limited period of time, then evaluated to see how effective it has been. If after that evaluation, a determination is made that the program hasn't worked as planned, then let's consider a more mandatory approach. But let's see if we can add the units needed first by using the funding source identified by the mayor. Many of our members, who are developers or work with developers, have major concerns about this bill and their ability to be able to adhere to it. GNAR asked the Metro Planning Commission to defer this bill because it needs more work. Please give everyone more time to work on a compromise bill with the ad hoc committee, making the program voluntary and temporary for a pilot period, and giving the voluntary approach time to work first before providing a mandate. As always, thank you for serving Nashville.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Alan Arndt. I'm here on behalf of NAOP organization, and I've been generally the funnel for a lot of our membership, about 500 members, as it relates to this item. And so, I think it's great that we're in a growing and vibrant city and we get to talk about problems like this. And I've heard, over the course of several conversations, several key things as well. And overwhelmingly from our membership, it is that we need something, one, simple. 133 is a complicated bill. What do you do? What do you trigger? How many do you do? We need simplicity. We need a good incentive program that is very similar to what the mayor has laid out. And something that addresses not only... One of the comments in the last ad hoc meeting that resonated with me was, you know, there was an acknowledgement that the 0 to 60% MHI group really is not served by 133. And what is the, what are we trying to solve? We've got a lot of programs and policies we're putting in place, but what's the number? Is it, are we trying to address the 0 to 60? Are we trying to address the 60 to 120? Where is it? Give us some numbers. Great, smart people in Nashville, I'm confident we always have, can come together and rally around solving the end game and what the problem is that we're trying to get to. So, on behalf of all of our membership, we hope that you defer 133 for further consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Margot Chambers. I'm at 3803 Princeton Avenue in Nashville, 37205. I'm for affordable housing, but I'm not for this law. I've attended many public meetings on affordable housing. I wouldn't call them productive. I'd call them chaotic, and there's no consensus reached. There's a lot of interest, but not a lot of direction. The meetings focused on those who need housing subsidized by federal tax credits and the developers who need to buy and sell the tax credits. Density in the environment suffers, and enforcement is not clear of how this is all going to work. There's a group in Davidson County who's been ignored by the inclusionary housing zoning bill, and those are people that currently reside in county, who invested in single-family homes. They've not been brought to the table, but they're impacted by this countywide zoning bill. These last-minute changes, as indicated by a second zoning substitute announcement today, a staff report that was updated minutes before today's staff presentation. I really had no idea what was in the presentation or what you're supposed to be voting on before I heard what was talked about today. I followed the legislation closely, and I feel as an advocate for finding affordable living conditions, I can't support a countywide zoning change just announced to the public today. So I'm asking you to please vote no. To defer the vote or to amend the legislation, like what happened in January, is going to cause problems for Metro and for the people that live here. I point to the unclear zoning problems created with the zone called the SP that was created and crafted, to be very specific, and yet it's been watered down over the years through text amendments on this commission. So that's another concern that I have about any countywide zoning bill for affordable housing. It's a good idea, but a countywide zoning will, with the ability to affect all property in the county, is not a way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jimmy Granberry with HG Hill Realty, 211, 311 Armory Drive. And in my spare time, I work for HG Hill in my full-time job, as I'm a commissioner at MDHA and chairman of the YMCA of Middle Tennessee. So, I care very deeply about this city. I care very deeply about this community, as represented by the projects that we've developed over the last 25 years and under my watch, and over the last 121 years that we've been in business in Middle Tennessee. And so, therefore, I really don't want anything, I don't care whether it's related to stormwater or inclusionary zoning or whatever it is, I don't want anything that's going to have a negative impact on this community. I think we all want what's best for Nashville, and I hope that we demonstrate that every day in what we do, not only in West Nashville, but South Nashville, North Nashville, East Nashville, and the surrounding communities. I think 133, and it's, you know, everybody's talked about all the technical details. I just think any time you get into a program that's mandatory, for us as a developer, we, you know, and I'm following my forefathers, we try to avoid getting out in the public and getting into community fights, because those community members are who are going to come shop with us and who are going to come trade with our tenants and support our tenants. So we don't want to do anything to create any kind of ill will in those communities. So we want to have full community to support whatever part of town we're in. But I think 133 being mandatory, just, in our world, what it does for us is we just would avoid triggers. We just, we just wouldn't put ourselves in that forefront, just because that's sort of a policy this company's had for long before I was in the saddle I'm in. One other small part that Marty spoke to was the financial community does not like, they don't like uncertainty. And this creates a lot of uncertainty when you've got a two-year Sunshine Law involved. And I think that's something that we really haven't addressed in all the different community meetings that we have that Sunshine Law. And so I think that's something that we really ought to work on if we defer this and go to the next step. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition to the bill? So, we are going to take a short break before we start with the commission discussion. I think we'll take a break for about 10 minutes. Ah. Okay. You're welcome to come up and speak.
I'm Joseph Hamilton. I live at 305 Mountain Side Drive. That's 37215. I've been on the faculty at Vanderbilt for 58 years, and I've seen changes in Nashville that deeply disturb me. It doesn't matter what you do, but if the city is serious about affordable housing, then it's going to stop allowing developers to tear down all the affordable housing that's around the neighborhood and build back two to four, 800 to a million-dollar buildings. You can't have it both ways. That's the biggest part of the problem of affordable housing in Nashville. We're destroying all the affordable housing in Nashville. In addition, the STRPs, they take up affordable housing because people like to buy cheap houses and then rent them out. Let me simply say, high-density housing through all of a city is not always good. I have spent six months living in China. China's new five-year plan says the following: "We have realized that our high-density cities are giving us great problems." And so now, in their next five-year plan, they are building, for example, around Shanghai, seven satellite cities of low-density housing with trees and greenways, because they don't want to have all of those people living in high-density cities. So, if we're serious about it, we have to keep some low-density areas and some high-density areas. We don't want the more high-income people leaving Nashville, as the Tennessee has documented already is happening. We don't want that happening in the future again. So get serious about affordable housing and stop developers from tearing down affordable housing. That's the thing, I don't know whether I'm for or against 133. The problem is what you allow the developers to do with that. That's the serious issue.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and we're going to take a short break. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes.